So, good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to this hearing on cybersecurity as part of the Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Before we begin, I would like to thank everyone for their work and preparation for today's hearing. The Department of Technology, Deputy Director Sherry Kish, Assistant Director Tom Diamond, thank you both for being here, and thank you for bringing Mr. Matthew Curtin, founder of Interhack Corporation, with us today to provide the public with information about cybersecurity and how we can protect ourselves online with today's technology. Again, Mr. Curtin, thank you for taking the time to be here and looking forward to your presentation. I would like to thank any members of the public that have been able to attend or watching from home, and remind those members, if they are interested, to please fill out a speaker slip before the public testimony portion of the hearing begins. We are here because October is National Cybersecurity Month. We live in a world that is more connected than ever before. The Internet touches truly almost all aspects of everyone's daily life, whether we realize it or not. So, it's important that residents of the City of Columbus are informed on ways to protect themselves when using the Internet. I'm confident that the information presented today will provide knowledge that we all will be able to use. This hearing will be available to the public on the columbus.gov YouTube channel, is currently streaming live online on the CTV website, and broadcasting on Time Warner and WOW on Channel 3 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. With those introductions, I will now turn it over to Deputy Director Sherry Kish, who will introduce Mr. Curtin. Thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Cenziano. Thanks for allowing us to come in front of you and in front of the public to talk about such an important issue. This is the 13th year of the Department of Homeland Security's National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. They, along with the National Cybersecurity Alliance, work together every October to remind businesses and individuals about the cyber threats that exist and how they can do their part to protect themselves from cybercrime. At the City of Columbus Department of Technology, we take cybersecurity very seriously. We have a team of individuals watching over our systems around the clock to ensure the citizens' information is protected. While we can protect the systems that support the work of the City of Columbus, we can't protect every household, so our goal for this meeting is to hear from an amazing expert in the field of cybersecurity about what our residents should know about the current state of cyber threats and what they can do to protect themselves. I'd like to introduce the founder of Columbus-based Interhack, Matt Curtin, and I'd like to read part of his bio and probably embarrass him a little bit. Matthew Curtin is a computer scientist and cybersecurity expert. He leads Interhack's professional practice addressing matters such as data breaches, intellectual property protection, computer crime, and the use of data in litigation. Curtin has been engaged as an expert or witness in various legal proceedings. His opinion has been accepted by federal and state courts throughout the country in hearings, trials, and in appeals. He has vast experience and is well-respected in the world of cybersecurity. He has authored two books detailing two major projects: Brute Force Cracking the Data Encryption Standard, where he helped to lead the Daeshaw Project in defeat of the US government data encryption standard for the first time in open research using exhaustive key search; and two, Developing Trust: Online Privacy and Security, where Matt discusses his role as the primary investigator in Interhack's Internet Privacy Project, showing how decisions made in the design and implementation of Internet-connected systems impact the security of computer systems and the privacy of other users -- of their users, excuse me. Curtin has lectured at many well-known institutions such as the Ohio State University's Department of Computer Science and Engineering, and now Columbus City Council. I didn't think, after reading his impressive bio, that he would have any free time, but he does find time to give back to our community by providing public service in emergency communications and emergency response. He carries qualifications and certifications in the FEMA Incident Command System, National Incident Management System, National Weather Service Skywarn, and is a member of the Franklin County, Ohio Community Emergency Response Team, as well as the Ohio Amateur Radio Emergency Service Mutual Assistance Team. We are beyond lucky to have such a wonderful asset in Columbus. Matt, thank you again for being here with us today, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. The first thing that I think is important for everyone to understand when we talk about cybersecurity is that we need to train our intuition. We spent our whole lives growing up in physical space, and we've learned things like when it's dark that we can't see, we don't know what threats are there, so we avoid dark alleys. We understand that if there is an ability for somebody to open a door, then we might want to put a lock in place so that only certain people can open the door. Even our children understand when they have a bicycle that if they want to prevent somebody from being able to take it, they can put a lock in place. Understanding that this is our experience as we are growing up, we are able to get through an amazingly complicated world with relatively little trouble in the end. But when it comes to our presence online, many of us struggle. And the fact is that we don't have the kind of training that we have from our day-to-day experience that we are able to abstract very well. Most of us turn the computer on, and for us, we don't have any idea how it works. It's a giant email machine, or it's a giant web surfing machine. It's the Facebook machine. We don't really have much understanding of what's happening. For some of us, we spend a lot of time trying to make the pop-up boxes go away, and the use of a computer has really turned into a game of whack-a-mole. A lot of us in information technology will sit with somebody who's having a problem and will say, "Show us what's happening." They'll go through a process, and there will be a pop-up box, and the user will click to make it go away, and will always ask, "What did that box say?" And the answer is almost always, "I don't know." We would never, in real-world situations, sit in front of a contract, for example, put before us, and without even looking at it, sign it. Those are the kinds of disparities that we have and that make it very helpful for us to understand not only what the problem is, but to give us some idea about how we might be able to go forward. I have a couple of guidelines that I think might be helpful for everybody. The first is to understand that the Internet connects the entire world together. The same Internet that we use to talk with our schools, to talk with our representatives, to talk with the businesses that we engage with, and to socialize with our neighbors and our friends from school, is the same Internet that ISIS uses for recruiting. It is the same Internet that the Russian organized crime networks use for finding ways to fund their operations. And what that means is that if there is a way for ISIS to recruit from our community, they can use that network to do so. If organized crime can commit fraud to fund their operations by fooling us into giving them money, they can use that Internet to that end. So, a few things for us to think about, understanding that the Internet is effectively a bad neighborhood. We know that we should not hurry. One of the biggest things that we have with fraud is that we confuse people. Think about if you've been a cashier. You might have some training about how not to be short-changed. The short-change artist will always find a way to confuse the cashier and to give back more change than ever came in. The same thing can happen. Imagine your phone rings, and it's somebody who claims to be from the IRS, and they're investigating you, and you need to make a payment, otherwise you'll go to jail. If you don't have any idea what they're talking about, but you're concerned about going to jail, if you're afraid of the IRS, you might be tempted to respond because they'll say, "You have to give us the money before midnight, within the next six hours, within the hour." Whatever the timeframe is, it's always short before you have a chance to stop and think about what's going on. And the fact is, the IRS would never call you on the phone to make that kind of a pronouncement. The same thing happens any time that we are online. For example, when we get a piece of email that says, "You need to log into your eBay account now," or "You need to log into your Facebook account now because there's a security problem and we need for you to enter your password again." If we follow the links that are presented to us, we might find that they are cleverly disguised to misdirect us, to take us to a website that looks like but is not the one that we actually use. So, if we understand that we can be misdirected, then not only if we take the time to slow down, we can avoid being too confused, but we can follow that up by following established mechanism. If the IRS has a problem with us, they're going to send us a letter, they're going to give us a phone call, they've got an office. We can take advantage of any of those if we need to get in contact with the IRS. The same thing will be true of our bank. The same thing is also true of Facebook. The same thing is also true of Twitter or eBay. We can go to the website without following the link that was put before us. Something else that we find, especially in technology, is that many of us just love gadgets. We love to push buttons, we love to watch things go around tracks, and we're delighted by it. The fact is, though, if we are delighted by something because we can see what it does, but we haven't stopped to think about what else it can do, we might be setting ourselves up. For example, a baby monitor. We can put one of those in our house, and we think, "Oh, this is great. We can see what's going on in the baby's room." And it's wireless, so I don't need an electrician, or I don't need to run cable down the hallway. I can just watch on my monitor. But what a lot of us don't think about is what happens if somebody has a radio receiver and they stand outside of our house. I can tell you with the common brand of baby monitor, the kind that my wife and I received when we had a baby, I turned it on, and I walked down the street with my radio, and I listened to what was going on inside our baby's bedroom five houses down the street. Now, we put these on the Internet. Because it's not enough for us to transmit what's happening outside to our neighbors, we give it to the entire world to see. The fact that we can connect something is not evidence that we should do it, and it's good practice for us to think about whether we should. The last thing that I would say is that it really is important for us to understand that all of this business of something bad happening is not a matter of if something bad happens. It's a matter of when something bad happens. We don't live in the Midwest and say, "Well, if tornadoes happen." We don't live in California and say, "If an earthquake happens." We don't live in these structures and say, "If a fire happens." We don't build cars and say, "If someone crashes into another car." We know that these things do happen, and it's a statistical necessity that it will happen at some rate. So, what we do is we build systems to limit the damage for when those things happen. So, for example, we have seat belts in the car. We have firewalls. We have fire departments that will come in and extinguish fires once they get going. We have all kinds of infrastructure that will help us to be able to respond to these things well. And importantly, we train. We understand that when it's springtime and we go through the process of starting up our warning systems, it's not a matter of just listening to the sirens. We take our employees and our businesses and our schools, our children, and when the sirens sound, we move. We go to a specific place. We have been trained so that we are able to make the best chance for being able to get through the incident unharmed. The same thing needs to be true of the way that we operate everything that we have in our lives. So, to some degree, there is responsibility, of course, with the organizations that we engage with, but also, we have responsibility ourselves. The fact that we can buy a gas oven that can be connected to the Internet doesn't necessarily mean that we have the ability to manage what happens if somebody decides to break into our oven and turn on the gas. Maybe that's a condition that we need to think about, and maybe it's not a good idea for us to put that online. If we've got the mechanism to manage it, then fine, make the decision, but hooking something up because it can be might not be the best idea. So, in conclusion, there isn't really anything magic about computer systems. The fact is, they're finite state machines. And what that means is that they've got only so many buttons to push, only so many switches to turn on and off, and that means that we can understand everything that's going on with them. The question is whether it's worth it for us individually. Probably not. And so, we need to figure out what it is that we are going to engage with, manage what we have in there, and it's probably okay to ignore the rest.
So, thank you for that presentation, and again, for taking the time to be here. If you wouldn't mind, ask a couple of questions and just whatever response or you think is appropriate to kind of share. So, you mentioned kind of managing those expectations. I think we constantly see or hear information's been breached, or this store, this restaurant, your credit information has been taken. Outside of the free credit check, are there other best practices you would recommend to residents or businesses if they have those concerns or feel they fall into a category? If you still had a Yahoo email account just a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the big things to recognize is that you cannot have information about you stolen if you haven't given it to anybody. So, when we talk about your bank account, or your credit card, or your email, or your personal information being breached -- excuse me -- it's going to be what information either we have given or we have allowed to be collected about us. So, my advice specifically with payment cards is not to use debit cards. A debit is a transaction that takes the money out of your account, and you have to fight to get it back. A credit card means that there is money that goes out of the bank's account, and you'll settle up later. And that means if fraud has been conducted using your card, in the case of a debit card, it's your money, and you have to get it back. In the case of a credit card, it's the bank's money. You'll have to make an affidavit saying, "I didn't do this," of course, but the bank will have to get their money back. So, we shouldn't accept that kind of risk. So, that's the first thing, is the credit card. Stick with that. The other thing is that by limiting the number of organizations that we interact with, that's a reasonable enough thing to do. You know, we sometimes will say things to children, like, "There's stranger danger," and all this sort of stuff. The same thing is true online. The fact that you've got somebody's Facebook account that posts that you can get Oakley sunglasses for $3 does not mean that you should go click on that thing and go and give them your credit card information, or your PayPal account, or any of that sort of thing. So, those are the kinds of issues that you wind up dealing with. You know, we sometimes think about online or electronic commerce as if it's a mall in Main Street America. It's more like a bazaar, you know, somewhere in the middle of Asia where just absolutely anybody can come up and sell absolutely anything. And so, limiting our exposure by interacting only with certain sites, certain companies is also a helpful defense mechanism. And then, the last thing I would say is that just thinking about what kind of information we give up, that's an important thing for us to do. The fact is that we've got law that is meant to protect electronic communications, but it's written in such a way that if you have information being stored by a third party, like an email provider, the law, as I understand it, will look very differently at that stored communication versus stored communication that you have in your home. And so, that's something that we need to understand, and it's something that we could probably have our legislature addressing a little bit better.
So, you mentioned somewhat limiting that information that we provide. One thing, though, that is constantly asked is provide a username and password, and it feels in this day and age, every time I log in to my Sirius, to my Dispatch description, anytime online, it's looking for that. Is there a way you recommend to kind of manage just the amount of username and passwords, and maybe follow up what makes for a good, secure password? I think we hear about people that use their dog names, that use an address, or 12345. Any recommendations on those two pieces?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the things is that whenever we have to create an account, the question becomes, do we actually have to create the account? In a lot of cases, they just want us to log in. You're going to go do a search, Google wants you to log in. Do you really have to log in so that you can do the Google search? Probably not. And so, that's the first issue, is whether we even need to log in. Assuming that we do, that we want to have some kind of personalized experience, an email account provided to us, something like that, then it's a good idea to ask the question, "Well, what name are we going to use?" I don't know any reason that we should use our real, full, legal name for every transaction that we engage in. Some people know me as Matthew, some people know me as Matt, some people know me by my initials, some people know me by my radio call sign. All of these things are perfectly legal and legitimate ways to identify me. So, we can make choices about how we represent ourselves to the organizations that we engage with. One of my favorites is to use the name of the company as my first name or as my last name, so when somebody starts spamming me, I know where it came from. The other thing is never, ever reuse a password. Well, how in the world are you going to avoid reusing a password? You've got a million of them to remember. And the fact is, you can manage it, but you have to make a decision to do so. Don't scribble it on a piece of paper or post-it note that you don't really manage anywhere. Have a place to put it, a safe place, a place that you're going to keep with you, something that is not going to be online so that somebody's able to get it and find out all of your passwords. I have a lovely bit of technology here. I'm a big fan of this technology, and it's been around for some time. It's paper, and it's pretty good. And this is good technology for managing that kind of a problem. It's nice and easy and portable. Now, the other thing is, the kind of information that you put in here, if you're keeping passwords, it might be a good idea not to have all of the identifying information so somebody finding this is actually able to take over for you. So, that's one of the things. You can write them down, write them down in a safe place. With respect to how to make a password, don't think of it as a password. It doesn't have to be a word. Think more like a pass phrase. If you have a turn of phrase from literature that you like, or something that a friend of yours said as a punchline to a joke that was funny, something that will help you to remember it while at the same time typing in 42 characters with punctuation and capital letters and maybe some numbers, it's not that difficult to manage a password if you're thinking of it in terms of a phrase. Those are all tips, I think, that will help you to manage your presence online and to avoid having a breach of one identity bleed over into harming the others.
In your presentation, and I don't know if it's a little selfish, but I have a one- and three-year-old. I have the wireless baby monitor. And so, just curious if it's just baby monitors or other products, what you recommend to protect to make sure they are secure, or it's just kind of a product default or defect?
Assume they're not, because they aren't. The fact is, if you're buying a product for $9 or $19 or something like that, probably there has been very little consideration to security. It's one of the big problems that we have with security right now is that when we are trying to create something, we always think about what we're going to get for it, and we have been conditioned in the last few decades in particular to go for the most featureful product that we can get at the lowest cost. And the problem is, it just, it doesn't work because security requires thought, it requires design, it requires implementation, it requires testing, and that increases the cost. So, unless you are going in with security specifically in mind and that there are enough people like you doing the same thing, you're probably not going to find a secure product. There are many that will say they are secured or that will claim to be secure. I see this all the time in my practice. Companies engage us to do security assessments of their products, products that are on the market, products that claim to be compliant with very visible standards, and they say so right in the middle of their product literature, and I'll find zero evidence that they have given any thought to security whatsoever. So, assume that they're not secure, and maybe the wires aren't such a bad idea.
Appreciate that tip. You talked about the pop-ups and the kind of that whack-a-mole piece, just clicking. Sometimes, though, they're patches, and how to determine if it's a good patch, bad patch, how to really hone in, other than just clicking close and seeing it pop up again and someday maybe paying attention. Would you recommend for the public to make sure they are getting the right information, making sure it's updated, but also not falling for any traps?
Yeah, that's a great question. So many systems now self-update. So, it's important when we're looking at a pop-up for us to understand what that pop-up actually is. Online, we see a lot of deceptive advertising that will actually pop up a browser window that is designed to look like it is a system window. It's kind of funny because if you're using a Macintosh, for example, and you see a website that pops one of those things open, and it'll draw it as if it's Windows, you know, that's a pretty good giveaway. But when there is a pop-up, read the pop-up, understand what it says, and you should be able to recognize, because the pop-ups are going to be consistent. So, any time that you have an operating system update, it's going to look the same, there's going to be the same kind of text. And the fact is that most of us now have not just the computer, but, you know, maybe also a laptop, and maybe also a phone, and maybe also a tablet, and about 42 other things that can do a web search. So, if your computer is putting something up on the screen, wouldn't necessarily be a bad idea to use the tablet to type that text into Google and find out what somebody else says about that pop-up.
And in preparation of just the Cybersecurity Awareness Month, hearing a lot about ransomware, can you kind of explain what that is, if folks find themselves in that situation, what best practices are, just any general tips, and kind of, again, describe what it is to begin with?
Sure. Ransomware is a type of software, hence the suffix "ware," where your data are held for ransom. So, the idea is that instead of just having a virus that installs in your machine and does annoying things, it actually will encrypt the data on your disk so that you can no longer get to it. And then, to be able to get your data back, you will have to pay a ransom. Typically, the ransom will be the sort of thing you pay in Bitcoin, which is a type of electronic currency. And so, in practice, you cannot follow the money. It's an electronic equivalent of cash. So, this is exactly like a ransom that we have in the real world. If it happens, it is almost always cheaper to pay the ransom than it is to try to recover the files. Some of the earlier generations of ransomware were not so effective, and we were able to reverse the process. But the current generation of ransomware is getting to the point where even using forensic tools, we're not really able to get back to the data. So, things that you can do to avoid that problem are, number one, keep backups. If you have to throw your computer's hard drive away today, would you be able to do so and then start up again tomorrow? If you can, then ransomware is much less of a problem for you because if your hard drive's encrypted, just throw it away, restore your data. If you have everything stored in the cloud, and you're using something like a Google Chromebook, for example, then you can just get a new one, log into it, and all of your data will be there. Ransomware won't even work on those kinds of devices. So, those are things that you can do so that you have easy recovery. Preventing it from getting you in the first place is also helpful, and that's going to be the same advice for any kind of malicious software. Use antivirus software, make sure that it stays up to date, watch where you're going online, and don't click on things just because somebody sent them to you.
And in your presentation, and I showed my cards a little bit, you mentioned children. As a parent, making sure that children's information's safe, that there are any breaches, what advice do you have to make sure our kids, or those that maybe aren't thinking about those risks, are able to be able to engage but not have any problems down the road?
Yeah, this is also a topic of discussion at my house. So, explaining to an eight-year-old child-- So explaining to an eight-year-old child who really wants to log into the game platform that all of his friends are on, that the reason you don't log in is because there are people there to trick you and they're trying to get information about you is sometimes difficult. But putting things in those kinds of terms so that you can talk about them the same way that you talk about real-world dangers is, I think, the best advice. Not only that, but you just have to recognize the kids are going to want to log into stuff. You know, everything is targeted, so it's going to make them want to do it. So the other part of that is obviously engagement. I mean, ultimately, a lot of this is a social issue, and so we're not going to be able to prevent our children from being exposed to these things. We'll have to give them the right, you know, guidelines, what we expect of them, to be very clear about it, but also to stay engaged so that if they have logged into something, if they have created an account, if they are using a new game, if they are talking to other players online, that we become and stay a part of that conversation. So a lot of it is, as parents, the more that we can be curious, the more that we can give wise advice and not to be quite so authoritarian and dictatorial about how the machine shall be used, probably the better off we're going to be with respect to helping our children to protect themselves.
And in that regard, about protecting yourself, I think we've seen a social media star recently post a little too much information and be robbed for that. Is there any advice on posting too much or how to manage some of the information we may put out there that we think maybe just friends or family are looking at, but other people may looking at for a crime or other ways in which to, you know, look for an attack?
Yeah, it's, a lot of us will think in terms of, you know, who would want to see this? And that's really not the right way to look at it because the issue is going to be, well, what are we doing? Why are we doing it? What's the reward? So if we are on Twitter, for example, you know, this just blows my mind how many people need to publish to the entire world where they are right at that moment and what their lunch looks like is something that's, it's just mind-boggling. But we transmit information, not just the message itself, but remember that whenever we have an account, whenever we have a name associated with something, we are also building up reputation, we're building up history. So Twitter's a great example because you get only about 140 characters at a time, but you do that 10 times a day, times every day, and you can start to get a lot of information about somebody. The route that they will take to work, habits about stopping in for coffee on the way in or at a particular place for a drink on the way home, something like that. We start publishing a lot of information like that. So in general, we should think about our audience and think about the Internet as a publishing platform. So if we want to stay in touch with our friends and family and we're going to use Facebook to do that, number one, read the Terms of Service. Are you actually okay with those Terms of Service? Because they're pretty draconian. Assuming that you are okay with them, then you might be okay with them for only certain things. Maybe you won't post pictures, given what they say they are allowed to do with pictures. Maybe you'll post only text. You can also set your account up so that it will publish only to certain audiences. Google's social media, Google Plus, it works in a much more visible manner of limiting your audience, but Facebook has the same capability, almost all social media has the same capability. And we shouldn't just shout things out into the ether, we should think about the audience that we're publishing to, and when we do that, it might slow us down a little bit and it'll probably actually prevent us from sending some of the stuff that years later we'll wish that we didn't.
And speaking of years later, any advice for seniors? Work with an initiative called Age Friendly, and I know that's a kind of a new frontier, but they're getting more comfortable with online resources, but know that threat exists, but even in a different way. Any advice to make sure if it's phone or online for seniors?
Yeah, absolutely.
How they can be better protected?
Sorry, yeah, absolutely. The first thing is, in a lot of cases, seniors can feel pressure to move things along. They feel like they're holding up the works, that they're taking too long or any of that sort of thing. So I would say anytime you're working with seniors is, first of all, just to assure them, it is okay to go at your own pace. The reason that we have these machines is so that they will go at our own pace. So that advice that I gave in the beginning, not to be rushed, it especially applies to them. Using established mechanism, it especially applies to them. If they're used to going to the bank and seeing a teller and that works for them, then have them go see a teller. That is absolutely okay, and there is no reason that they should feel pressured to do something else. On the other hand, having a video conference where they could sit there and talk with the grandkids and everything is pretty great. So finding ways that we can engage with them that way and taking the time to figure that sort of thing out ourselves, thinking about those kinds of issues and then showing them this is something that we've looked at, we think that this is a reasonable way for us to engage. That might mean that we're going to use one product or one service over another, but in any case, talking about what it is that we mean to do and engaging with the idea of how we're going to do it safely, that's really the most important thing, just keep talking with them and it's okay to go at your own pace.
I really want to thank you for that additional information above and beyond the presentation. I think it's an important month to highlight cybersecurity and your expertise and experience is really appreciated. So thank you for answering those questions. I don't have any more and so have not been handed any speaker slips, and so without further ado, we'll turn it over to Department of Technology Assistant Director, Mr. Tom Diamond, to share a few helpful resources and contact information for those who fear they may be victims of cybersecurity threats. Tom?
Thank you, council member. First, I would like to thank, give a big thank you to Matt Curtin for coming in and sharing his knowledge with us today. That's great and I think that it's very important, so thank you. And then next, on behalf of the Department of Technology and our Deputy Director, Sheri Keshe, I'd like to thank you, council member, for allowing us to come in and share this knowledge with the viewing public here as well. Speaking of the viewing public, I did want to provide some online resources to folks. So we actually have a partnership with the national, there's an organization, it's the Homeland Security. They actually have some information online, so if visitors want to visit StopThinkConnect.org, you can find out some more information on cybersecurity and what they can do. And if you feel that you've been a victim of cyber, any type of cybercrime, I would encourage you to contact the Ohio Attorney General. They have some information on their website and that's ohioattorneygeneral.gov and they can point people in the right direction for that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond, for sharing those helpful links and resources. I know they are very important. No one wants to be in that situation where they feel they have been subject to attack, but I think we know in this day and age, that number continues to grow, so those links are very helpful.
Sure. And one last thing, as I, following up on your last question, my mom actually was a victim of some telephone crime, so I think it's very important for people to talk to their parents about that stuff as well and to assure them that it's not too, you can ask those questions, you know, so thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate you sharing that. So at this time, I'd really want to thank everyone in attendance and those watching at home for being a part of this hearing. Also, really appreciate the Department of Technology staff and their members for their support and recognition, and really, Mr. Curtin, thank you for taking the time. Your expertise, your knowledge was very helpful, and I expect we may get additional questions and may follow up for other best practices and guidance.
Thank you.
All the information was truly helpful, so thank you very much. I do encourage those at home looking for more information to visit the Department of Technology website at www.columbus.gov/technology or call 614-645-2550. You can also always call my office at 614-645-8084 or email me at mstenziano@columbus.gov and we're happy to provide any additional information that we can. So with that, thank you all. Good night, Columbus. We'll see you next time, and this hearing is adjourned.